You okay, Micah? All right, if you want to start it, Mr. Collins, if you have some stuff to start with, or if he has some stuff, whoever wants to start will open up our six o'clock workshop.
Yeah, let me check.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. One thing that I was gonna talk about, next month, we are gonna have another work session before we start, it's going to be on step systems. So, we're gonna try to get to some good training on some things we see coming forward to us that you may or may not have experience with. So, I know we will have an engineer here next month to discuss how they work, how the developer does them, what kind of goes on from start to finish with those, and kind of discussing what, as a planning commission, you look at, what us as staff looks at, and then how the engineers work with that. Past that, I know that in the fall, one week, we're wanting to do a studying or a training on traffic studies, similar type thing, what a traffic study looks at, what, Kevin will be the one doing that, because he's good on traffic, and I was hoping he was gonna be here to kind of discuss that. But, everything that an engineer looks at for traffic studies, traffic counts, but also some of the dynamics of that. So, I know we're gonna do that one month. Is there anything else, I feel like that's way loud, that anybody wants to see as a training, or anything that we can look into doing about a one-hour training on, that you have questions about, things you see that you want to know more about, or understand kind of the background of how anything's done? If you have anything, let me know. If not, and you think of something, let me know. But that, I'm hoping that some of these trainings will be beneficial to projects we see coming up, and can understand the house-wise winds of some of the things that we're looking at. If there's anything you know of, that you want to see, let me know.
Thank you, sir.
That's when I'm gonna hand it off.
Another end of the table.
Okay, several, several things to go over with you tonight. Again, thank you for coming out. These are in no particular order, but I want to hit some things that I know have been discussed, and then some things I'd like for you guys to consider as we get into going forward with some things. First, as you know, the postmaster in the postal service has gotten into the requirements for the cluster mailboxes, although we've really not had a definition for what those are. Well, we know what they are, but the management of them going forward has been a bit of a question mark. I met with the post office last month, the postmaster was out, we're working on having her come in and answer some questions and get us some guidance on that.
She's not here tonight for the workshop?
Not here tonight, I just could not be here tonight. But, there were some things that I know have come up that are questionable. The first is the apparent attempt to enforce the cluster mailboxes going backwards three years, I believe is the window that they're looking at. So, if you have phase one of a subdivision that's been installed, phase two is being built, and there's no location for a cluster mailbox, I believe the post office is now requiring that post, that cluster mailbox is being, be installed for all those phases that are not complete going back three years. That presents a bit of a problem as far as how that's done. If there's no space for that cluster mailbox on that, on that plat, the developer sold the property, we're building houses and doing those things, then how do we enforce the installation, management, ownership, maintenance of that cluster box system? We really just don't have a good guidance on that. The other thing we don't have a good guidance on is who owns the cluster mailboxes after the subdivision is complete. There's no HOA, there's a subdivision, it's 50 homes, the developer has out, has, has put about a space for the cluster mailboxes. I know you may recall, according to our ordinance, our subdivision regulations, we require parking and those other, those other things, but the ordinance is specific, resolution's specific that the city does not own that. So, who does own that? What is the maintenance of that? If those parking spaces need to be maintained in the future, restripped?
And some, and some of these that are coming through now are, don't follow that ordinance, they're just gonna be a random spot.
Right.
If they want that parking, it won't be covered, or those things.
Right. So, that's gonna be a difficult thing for us, even if there's a garbage can out there. You know, someone gets their mail, they throw it away, whatever, junk mail, whatever the case is, who manages that if there's no HOA? The postal service isn't doing that, but I think we need to get some guidance on that. I don't, I don't think we can impose perpetual ownership for, of a developer, and I don't think we can impose an HOA. So, if there's no HOA, and the developer sold the property, who's responsible for the future maintenance ownership of that cluster box system? I think we need that answer, or at least some guidance on that. I think we also need to be able to get that back to the developers, so that they come through, you have a phase one or phase two that, that is now underway, how do we address that? And, more, most importantly, get that information out to the current and future residents.
Excuse me?
Yes.
What if they already have mailboxes present? If, if, if a development is already underway, or it's, part of it's finished, and they've got mailboxes already?
I'll give you the best answer I can give you.
Knock 'em down.
Best answer I can give you is I have no clue.
Right.
The honest answer.
Yeah.
The, the way that it's been discussed, and I don't know this, I hope we get some guidance on this, is the three-year threshold, so if there is an area that is incomplete, even though there's a mailbox there, the postal service guidance states that there's no requirement that they service that mailbox. So, we're gonna need to get an idea of, of what that is. The installation of a mailbox is one thing, but is it out of conformity with the guidance for the cluster mailboxes?
No grandfathered mailboxes.
So, I think, I think Otter Creek is the most pressing, because it's currently affecting citizens.
Right.
People are moving in. I think the, one of the builders put in a model home, they put in a mailbox, the postmaster came out and said, "That's a really cute mailbox, but we're not putting anything in it."
Right.
And so, they're telling them their option right now is to get a PO box at the mail center. I don't think there's enough PO boxes open up there to serve that community once it's completed.
Right.
And so, then, I'm asking the developer, what's his plan? He tells me he's gonna put it in the front left, like on Old Nashville, so literally there's no parking, people are gonna be parked at the entrance to come in, I'm like, that doesn't work, that can't be feasible. So, you know, what is the resolution? I was just asking Mr. Potter, Mr. Sullivan, that was, that was initially brought to us in early 2017, it wasn't approved till 2018. So, if it was submitted prior to them putting this in place, like you're saying, what is the date of, this is when, after, post this, pre this, is when they, we're gonna follow it? So, and there's just no answer, and these people don't have mail, don't have any kind of solution, the developer doesn't own any property in phase one, it's like, what, and then what is our role? How do we get involved to help find a solution? And that's what has been so frustrating, is there's no answers. Nobody can say, "This is what you need to follow, this needs to happen." And that's like, can we get the postmaster to say, "Phase one, Otter Creek, you can get mailboxes, in phase two, the developer will have to dedicate a lot and put a, a covered system, and then we'll transfer everybody to that at that point? Can they temporarily hold it?" That's what, so, that's what we were hoping tonight to ask the postmaster and have some answers, but...
And also, is there any precedent set anywhere else that we might could check on that?
The information I've gotten back is it's just done district by district. Obviously, everybody has different development stages, different development processes, so I know the postmasters have a good bit of leeway in how those things are managed. Obviously, they have their guidance. Their guidance is not code, but for us, the residents need to have that answer, for sure. As a planning commission, as the city, then we have to consider things, not only for the location of it, obviously, we're concerned about that, the maintenance, the upkeep, the appearance, the safety, but then you get into other things like the S-word sidewalks. How do you, how do you, how do you get people to and from, if you're not gonna have that parking? Because that, sidewalks then take on a little different meaning. You know, are they within the subdivision, are they both sides of the street? Are you requiring access throughout the subdivision to get to a cluster mailbox? What about parking? All those things. So, we hoped to have her here tonight, we'll work to have her here at the next meeting. We need the answer as a staff, but there, there are several questions that are gonna have to be addressed, and to make sure everyone understands that this discussion is not a planning commission discussion, or a city of Fairview discussion, it's a postal service discussion, and we're stuck, you know, having, having kind of unwind...
I guess the challenge that I push, when, when a developer says he's gonna throw it in the front entry, at what point do we say, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, that doesn't meet our ordinances, this isn't approved on the plat, we didn't tell you you could put this here, it's not gonna be a safety concern, it's gonna be in the city right of way, so it's gonna be a liability to us." Like, at what point do we interject and say, "It has to be X," or, you know, because if, right now, it's like the answer is they can just do whatever to satisfy the postal office, and it trumps everything. It just seems improper.
I think we would have to go back and amend the plat. I think if they come in and they carve out a space, then they're gonna have to amend that plat, that will have to come back before this body.
But, but I don't, there's some other subdivisions that we haven't done that, where they've just thrown something in a corner on a green spot that was a dedicated green space, and now it's the postal spot, and, and it's not gonna meet the ordinance that we put in place last year.
Where, do you know where, do we have any here?
Pinnick Place tonight is, uh, Wynwood? Is Wynwood one of them? Yeah, it's towards the back, but it doesn't have parking, it doesn't have coverage, like we put in, you know, it just...
Right.
So, at what point do we say, "Well, if we are gonna have these, it needs to come back and meet our ordinances," and then, because then this, then this poor developer has to redraw and bring being back, and, I mean, it's just, it's a mess.
Right.
And nobody has an answer, it's just really frustrating, I think, for everybody.
And then, if you amend the plat, where is, who is that parcel deeded to? How does, how does, what's the longevity of that?
The one neighborhood that we have that was submitted after we put the ordinance in place is Cox Pike, and it's dedicated in the green space HOA area. So, it's right by the playground, so the HOA, assuming it stays intact, is gonna be responsible for that area, because that entire area will be deeded to it, so...
Right.
So, that's, that would be, you would hope, I think that Otter Creek has an HOA, I don't know about Pinnick Place, if they have one, I think most of them have.
Pinnick Place has HOA, Whispering Winds does, as well as Wynwood.
It's just like, what, you know, who do you talk to to get a final answer? Even if it tells us, "Sorry," you, every single one of them has to have it, and you can put it in a terrible spot, but at least we know, and we can start planning and saying, "Here's the answer, here's when it's gonna happen," you know, just, just leaving in the wind, things just been tough.
We, we may, as a part of that discussion, when the postmaster's here, is pull the plats and the approved plans for Pinnick Place and Wynwood, kind of give those as, this is, this is a current situation that we're, we're facing, and then also answer the, the going backwards ones.
Well, that was what my approach tonight is, Otter Creek, he says the only place to have is up on Old Nashville Road, so people are gonna park at the entrance to get and walk out of their car, over no sidewalk, over the curb, into our right of way, and try and check their mail. That's his only resolution right now. So, how does them not wanting to put mail in mailboxes trump safety, or trump, you know? It just, it's like, they're saying, "We don't care about safety, we don't care about your ordinances, how a neighborhood looks, you, we're just not delivering your mail, get a PO box or throw it in a random corner."
Right. Well, the, the city does have enforcement authority through no parking designations. So, in that instance, you could go back, if you had to work with the developer and say, "Look, we're not gonna allow parking through a posted no parking area in, in certain sections of certain roads. We certainly have the authority to do that, and if we deem that to be a safety issue, we can." So, that's, that may be a game that you don't want to play, but it is an enforcement capability the city has outside of this body, but through the board commissioners. So, I think as we look at those, at those locations, and what's proposed, we probably need to look at our parking ordinance as well, to see how we, how we word that, such that we maintain safety. Not everybody checks their mail at the same time. So, you have to consider, within those places, do you have slight distance for a school bus, fire truck, in and out, if that truck is...
Well, our ordinance requires parking spots now.
Right.
If it follows our ordinance.
But, I mean, if they just go install one...
Yeah.
Then what, what's the violation for that?
It wouldn't mean anything that we've worked on, we, we thought we were being proactive. We were the first, one of the first cities in the area to put anything in place for this, this mailbox thing. We're like, you know, we wanted to pat everybody on the staff on the back, like, "Great work, they're doing this before any issues hit." Sure enough, they're like, "No, just kidding, everything has to have it."
Right.
You know, it just, and I think Otter Creek is the most pressing, because there's people that, that have no answer, they can't get their mail right now.
Right.
So, citizens are going, you know, "Can you help us? Who can help us? Who do we go to?" There's no point of contact for the post office, and that's what we were hoping tonight, to get something out of her of...
Well, you have a congressman.
And, and I have talked to the congressman, I've talked to Mark Green, I've talked to his aides, I've talked to him about it, and, and they're, and they were talking about on the federal level, it, it just goes on and on forever.
Right.
There's, there's a neighborhood in Franklin, Lad Park, a new face came in, there's about 10 residents that had mailboxes getting mail in their mailboxes, and they said, "You have to have a cluster system," and they quit delivering to the mailboxes. So, we're not the only ones fighting it, it's everywhere, but just like, there's gotta be a uniform answer. And the developer on Otter Creek, since that's the most pressing one, said, "Phase two, phase three, I'll take a lot, I'll dedicate an area, we'll make it a true area, but, but what is our temporary solution until then?"
Right.
We were, we were looking at, there's a dead-end road, maybe you could put some mailboxes down at the end of, what is that road? You come in, you take a right, it stops or whatever.
Right.
But then, but then does it affect, you know, fire truck turnaround? Is it safety, you know, but is it a, a resolution that we could have, or temporarily, until we can put something more in place?
Right.
Is there also an issue about, the, the cluster mailbox has to be within a certain distance of each home that's serviced? So, even if you put it in the very front, it may not...
Yeah, not comply with their rules, yeah.
And is there an option where we're at the, I know he's just in phase one, but maybe amend phase one to include a lot that's not been developed yet in phase two, on the end? And maybe he can use that, that might be an option?
Let's see, if he... Phase one is all sold, so it's all private property.
Well, then phase two?
It is, the developer... The, the developer doesn't own any of them, so the builders own them, but they're private property of the builders, who aren't tied to the developer. So, that's what makes it tough, is that developer, who's in charge of putting this, doesn't own any property in phase one, except for that front entry area. And then, the, now the question is, going forward, do we need to have the postmaster sign off on all our plats? Yes, this meets, yes, this doesn't, you know? Like, how do we prevent this headache? It's just, it's crazy.
Could we, though, take a lot in phase, that's at the very beginning of phase two, the buds up to phase one, maybe amend, so that can be included in phase one, that can be used, maybe?
Well, they're developing phase two right now, and so, there's no roads, curb and gutter, anything to any of those lots right now.
I haven't been back there recently, so I didn't know how...
But he's working on it.
Maybe far enough.
Yeah.
The only other simple option may be, depending on location, depending on lots and where they are, is rather than amend a plat, in this instance, where we're talking about those, those subdivisions, those areas, but you may be able to assign some sort of easement to a spot. So, say I own a lot in the subdivision, and there's room or space that doesn't really negatively affect my, my property, then you may be able to assign some sort of easement for the space the size of this table, or bigger, so that you have room for it. Now, that doesn't take care of parking, and those things, we're talking going backwards, not going forwards. But, some way to install those, so we can accommodate that, that service. I know if I lived in there, and I, I know we have some people here tonight, that, that would be an irritation beyond belief. So, hopefully, we, we get to some answers. We'll pull those plats, have some available, and see if we can't, can't work through that.
I think Otter Creek's the most pressing, because it's currently affecting people.
Right.
The other ones, we can figure out, but the biggest question is, can, where can we put a temporary? Is a temporary gonna work for the postmaster to get them mail right now? And then, I think the developer's ready to work with us in phase two, and take somewhere and make it a true spot? And then, are the other ones gonna be okay? Pinnick and Wynwood, or whatever these other ones?
Right.
Like Sweet Briers under construction in phase two right now, does it, does it get mail? I think somebody said they do get mail at the new phase two of Sweet Brier, but our phase is gonna be, it's just, no, there's no set in stone of this is how it follows and how we know to plan for it.
Is there a number of lots that make a requirement for it?
Who knows?
I see there was a threshold, because if you have a subdivision of two, I don't think it blocks. It seemed like there was a cutoff number on it that made it kick in.
I think their goal is to eventually have everybody get a cluster system or a PO box. Like, Mr. Powers not here right now, but he said he, he knew someone who just built a new house, moved in, and the, the postmaster for that area said, "You're not gonna get mail." It wasn't in a neighborhood, it was just a standalone parcel, said, "You have to get a PO box, we don't deliver anymore." Like, that's, their goal is to eliminate the, the mailbox, is what it seems like.
I call the post office, they seem to say that wasn't the postmaster, but it was three or more homes.
The who, homes?
Three or more homes.
Oh, okay, three or more.
The scenario you gave just a few minutes ago, if I was a homeowner, brand-new subdivision, I, I selected a lot, built a house, and then they come in and put a easement in, in front of me, and put the cluster box, and, and four parking spots, or two parking spots, that really diminishes the value of that personal, that piece of property, because you no longer have the view, or you no longer have your open sidewalk for your kids to play. You've got traffic coming and stopping in front of your home every day, all day long, to get their mail. So, you no longer have what you, what you selected.
Sure. Now, the, the easement discussion was going backwards, not going forwards, with the understanding that you wouldn't have the parking spaces and the other things, and it would have to be an area, obviously, someone's got to volunteer to, to, to grant the easement, right? So, you'd have to really figure out what works within those subdivisions, find out who would be willing to allow that on their property, so to speak, to make that go. So, there, there would be some considerations there. I don't think there would be an expectation going backwards, that you would attempt to take property from an individual homeowner for parking, and that, unfortunately, there's gonna be some of this to where, if the post office says, "We're going backwards three years, and you're not gonna get your mail," then unfortunately, somewhere in that homeownership group, HOA or not, there's gotta be some agreement brought about for where you get that.
Right. I mean, if you, if you've got like a cluster box in front of somebody's home, you gotta anticipate that people are gonna come 24 hours a day...
Sure.
And stop, and get their mail, with the lights on on their car, slam the door, somebody's got a hot rod, or somebody doesn't, and that... Yeah, and so, that's, those homes immediately adjacent to that thing, if you, if you know it's there and you select the home, that's one thing. But if you are there, and then you take an easement, or you put it straight across the street, that's something else, and I, I fought the federal government on several other issues, and they win until you've got a major lawsuit, and we're not big enough to sue them. So, I don't know where you're gonna get, because if, if they're gonna be obstinate and go back three years, and they don't give direct directions to the, the postmaster, who's the lowest fish on the, in the, in the pond, they're not, you're not gonna win, because that postmaster, in my opinion, won't have a straight-up answer, or if they had, they do have an answer, it's probably not the same answer the one's gonna have in Philadelphia. So, we're really up against a, a, a wall here on this thing.
Sure. Well, again, the, the responsibility within this thing for the city of Fairview, and then the planning commission, is to ensure going forward that we regulate those areas for future phases, future developments, for other things. I think that's an easy part, and it's Mr. Butler's coming, I think we addressed that a couple of years ago, almost now, as to how we were gonna move forward with that. The issue that's been brought about is the retroactive. You know, as, we were ahead of everyone to get an answer which we all thought would work, there was no way to know, nor, nor was there any way for this board to effect a backwards answer to that. We couldn't predate or postdate that, that fix. So, I'm curious to see what the postmaster says is the solution for those homeowners who've existed, or have come into existence in the interim, and are gonna have to get an answer for that. I'm, I'm curious to hear what that is.
I think that's what, you know, if, if it's our duty or not, or, you know, you tell me, but can we task to try and find a, a temporary resolution with the future goal, especially on Otter Creek? Because we, the developer has told me I will do whatever on phase two or three, but I can't, my hands are kinda tied right now. So, can we, you know, with the postmaster, find a, a temporary to allow access for mail right now, and then, and then it gives us time to allow that one to change the plat, or whatever needs to be done...
Sure.
For a future, for phase two? Because phase two's being built right now, they haven't put any curb and gutter in, and we'll be able, you know, it would have time to sit at it and look at it.
Right.
If that's proper.
Yeah. We'll, we'll see if I can't maybe prep a couple of question and answers before we get to the meeting to make sure that stuff goes. Part of the difficulty is, there's no number to the Fairview post office, you have to physically drive out there, see if someone's there, leave the messages, go through the process, you get 1-800-whatever-the-number-is, and it's...
Not for any of them, they took them away.
Right. So, it's...
They don't wanna talk to you.
For us, it's been difficult communications. If you can share that with us, that'd be great. We, we don't, we don't have it.
Uh-oh.
Okay. Whoever has it, we'll take, we'll take the number, for sure.
Good luck if they answer it.
So, Mayor, if you, if you'll write that number down, I'll get that from you, and we'll follow up with that, so. But we'll do our best to make sure they're there. I apologize for the inconvenience, but if you guys can be back for, for the meeting, we'll get that back out and make sure, we try to get all the answers we can. We know it's frustrating, and we, we wanna get the answer just as much as you do.
Is it, is it unrealistic that to have, where new subdivisions, I mean, whether it be Otter Creek or any of the subsequent subdivisions that come, you know, down the road, to ask the developers to, when they're making up their plat, to actually put in a space for that? Is that unrealistic, or is that, is that a possibility?
No. Our regulations require that. We did that a couple of years ago. Going forward, in 2018, we adopted that forward.
Now, the, the plat for Otter Creek, was that done previous to that, or...
The plat for Otter Creek was done prior to.
Okay. Okay. All right. So, I'm just trying to understand.
That's, and that's where we say, what is the date that you go back to? Because we jumped on it, we enforce these things now, so if a neighborhood came to us tomorrow, it would include a covered area, parking, parking lots, to be able to go and check your mail. But, Otter Creek submitted to us early 2017, was approved early 2018, or mid-2018, and it wasn't included at that time, we didn't even know about it, we weren't talking about it, and so, now they've gone back and tried to retro, and makes it difficult.
No, no.
We're glad to have you.
Just get a better understanding of the processes that y'all, y'all threw in, and try to get up to speed, so to speak.
All the guidance we, all the guidance we had was, we were... Adopted the regulations to make sure those things go. What we weren't really ahead of was the decision by, apparently, someone at the postal service, after the fact, come in and say, "Well, too bad, we're still not gonna direct to do these things." And all of a sudden, we're just kinda like everybody. So, hopefully, we can get you an answer, I know it was frustrating, we want to make sure we get answers we can, so... We'll dig into it and... We're ahead, we just weren't, we, we didn't...
Because you can't mail it to you.
Wow.
That would be nice. That's crazy.
So, is the question, you don't have an address, or you can't receive mail at the address?
You've gotta be able to take a, two pieces of mail to the school to register, to show your home address, that's a problem.
So, that's the first...
Yeah, can we get Bubba Jones and Ricky Jones, maybe Thompson, so the county commissioners, can we invite them to the meeting? Maybe they can get something passed to the school, to the county, that helping schools out, at least.
What a mess.
Yes.
I mean, I, Angela Durham may be a better source for that.
Maybe both.
Um, but I, I don't, I just don't know, I have to do some investigation, see what that is. I don't, I don't know, I don't know what would apply, is it a billing address, is it a mailing address, is it that sort of?
The mailing address is what will show up on that, that bill, that's the problem. It doesn't have the shit of house address. Think about when you open it, all the address it shows on that bill is what's in the window, on, in the envelope. So I can see that.
So you can't show your proof residency to the school or anything?
That applies, uh, applies also that new star driver's license you're trying to get.
Yeah.
You gotta have something that proves that you have a residency where you're at.
Um, so,
I'm confused about that.
You not have a residence, you can't prove your residence just because you can't get mail?
Because if you don't get the, the ma- the mail.
The, the school wants you to bring like a electric bill, and it shows your address.
A water bill.
You don't, they, they can't get that mail with that address, and so they're going up there with a, well, here's my P O box, I swear.
That might be their policy, but they're not gonna deny child zoning, because you can't produce a utility bill.
But that's a,
That might be how they're wanting it done. Somebody can get in the car and drive out there and verify where you live, and that's how it happens in a lot of counties. So, I mean, I understand, it's, look, it's a political problem. I was asking Micah, how many, the, the, we could, we could set some rule and do in ordinance, and try to figure out the answers to these questions, but the post office might change its rules in five years. In which case, it falls back on the HOAs. And every one of these developments need to have an HOA, period. And so the citizens can get together and go, they've changed their rules, we're not getting our mail, what do we need to do? Maybe we need to get together and pay to have a new cluster mailbox built over here on our common property, that'll satisfy these new rules from the post office, that have changed, just because they've decided to change the rules.
The HOA can enforce USPS, just like you often.
But if you don't, if, if you don't have HOA, you probably don't have any common ground. And if you don't have any common ground, then you can't, then you're gonna, annex, condemn some people's private property to create this spot, and that's back to where I was talking about before.
And, uh, It, it's a chicken or egg thing. I think, I think probably the best thing for us as staff to do is go back, review this video, hear what the questions are, get those known questions to the postmaster, have the postmaster here, and let's go over the known questions and the answers we're given, and then figure out from there.
Is that, is that, this is the second meeting that the postmaster was supposed to show up to, so what, what's it gonna take to get that?
I can't answer, I, we're doing all we can do, I know it's very frustrating, um,
And we can't make them come, unfortunately.
Right.
Part of the issue is that, I think, when we look at these developments, we have this common area, it's a common space, but it appears maybe there's not some in each phase. 'Cause if there was some common space in phase one, we could make, okay, just use that, so maybe we need to look at including common space in each phase going forward, when we break these developments up.
But going forward, going forward, it'll have a dedicated cluster system, too.
Right.
But just, but if they say, no, it's gotta be increased, whatever.
Yeah.
Who knows what else could happen, but.
I think the be, it's not our responsibility, it's not the city's responsibility, not at all, but can we be a liaison to try and help find a solution? 'Cause then at what point, like we're saying, if they're throwing these cluster boxes in these random spots, when do we say, whoa, 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 this changes the plat? It needs to be revisited on our side? So, we're not responsible for making sure they have mail, but can we be a liaison to try and help?
Yeah, sure, we wanna, we wanna do that. There are just things that, um, you're gonna have to work within several things, you know, the location of it, the traffic, the site distance, the moving around, what makes sense, what doesn't make sense, lighting, a- all of those sorts of things are gonna come into play, so.
Well, right now, the resolution is to throw it up by front on the main road, and, and the way it sounds is, we're just, it's just happening, and it's not being visited, it's not being discussed. That's what is kinda unknown to me, is,
Right.
It's like, skip all city ordinances, we're just gonna put it wherever we see fit, and that's some of these neighborhoods where we've dedicated green space, now it's taking green space and putting in these mailboxes, it's just,
Um, but there, there are a couple of concerns with that as well. The, there are other ways to manage that within that. Keep in mind, on your newer subdivisions, where these things are just getting dropped in, you have a fifty-foot right-of-way. So the city can't manage what goes into the city's right-of-way, does not go into the city's right-of-way, for all those things. So, there is some teeth to be, to be enforced with. Um, but until we can get an answer from someone at the post office to say, here's what we're looking for, we're kinda flying by, and we'll, we'll do our very best to get that. Um, if worst-case scenario, we just can't get someone here, maybe we can get some written answers. Here's, here are questions, can we get some answers for that, to help us go forward, so.
Yeah, I think just more bigger, more small picture of Otter Creek right now, if there's any temp resolution for that.
Yeah, so, so we'll focus on that, make sure we can dig in to try and get something. I know it's frustrating for everyone, but we're, we, we wanna get it, we're, we're just, golly, or it's frustrating for sure. So, um, we'll also, um, maybe if you guys are gonna be here for a few minutes, I'll get you some cards, if you have some specific que- if you'll email me those, so I'll know what that is, I can get that drafted. Uh, when we take a quick break, I'll go get you that card. Yes, sir. Next, next couple of items, just to run down the list, um, because I know, um, time, and we never have enough time for these. I wanna go over, or take a minute to go over, um, some things we need to consider in the future, and I'll give you an example, and as these come about, if we talk about HOAs in these subdivisions and these other things. Um, one subdivision that's been, um, discussed recently with the developer and the residents is Stable Acres. Uh, I don't know how many of you from, from here were stable acres, it's on Northwest Highway. It's the gated, the subdivision that has the gate before you get into the subdivision. One of the things that we run into with that subdivision is the actual gated privacy of the subdivision. That subdivision has not yet been turned over to the city. As, as, um, you guys know, even if a subdivision is gonna be privately owned, the streets are gonna be private, the sidewalks, the storm drain, all such as that, we require bonds to be posted, so that the construction of that subdivision, if it's gonna be within the city limits, still meets the city construction requirements, as we should. Now, once it's, it's constructed, it's finished, it meets those guidelines, and it's done, then the city releases those bonds, the ownership then goes to the HOA, or whatever group is gonna own it and maintain it. Stable Acres is in a bit of a, a spot, and we're trying to work through this, such that when the subdivision came through, the planning commission at the time, and when I say at the time, I mean two thousand and five, maybe, granted the, the gate code for the gate to get in. So a fire truck could get in, school bus, all those sorts of things. But the plat for the property, the subdivision, shows the streets and the infrastructure to be public. If you pull up the tax map, the Williamson County tax map, and you look at that subdivision, all of the streets, all of the rights-of-way, everything in that subdivision are shown to be public streets. Right? It's just the way that it is. Um, but the gate restricts access to that subdivision to the residents. There's no way that residents in a subdivision can gate a publicly maintained and publicly owned street. So as we get into these discussions, we're going to have to, to make sure, because, listen, this is gonna grow, you get into HOAs, different, different, um, thresholds of subdivisions come in, this will not be a singular discussion, it will be, there'll be several. So we will need to make sure, as we get into that, that there's an understanding that the streets, rights-of-way, sidewalks, all those things will be platted to the ownership of the homeowners association, rather than platted to ownership of the city. So with that subdivision, right now, we're, we're having a discussion between the developer, the HOA, and the city, where the developer and the HOA are gonna have to determine whether or not the streets, roads, infrastructure in that are owned by the HOA, or owned by the city. Um, the, the bond, the construction bond for that subdivision expires July eighth of this year. We've met with the developer and offered a six-month extension, which we'll come to the, the board to do. The developer is, um, appreciative of that. Developer is a partner in trying to put down the final layer of asphalt, that's the only thing that has to be done in the subdivision. Put down the final layer of asphalt, it's, it's complete. Question is, what happens to the subdivision, once the final layer of asphalt is installed and the city releases the bond? Because the city, the property is either gonna have to be dedicated to the city, as public rights-of-way, or dedicated to the HOA as private. The city is indifferent, we, we don't care what the answer is, we just have to get to an answer. In that case, if it's HOA, then everything from the right-of-way edge of Northwest Highway into the subdivision would be private, including the streets, the sidewalks, the storm drain, the gate, the maintenance, um, all of the landscaping. If they decide that they don't wanna do that, and it becomes public, then the gate and everything associated with the gate would have to be removed and opened up. Obviously, for people who've moved into that subdivision, the belief, idea, understanding in some way, is that it is private. I have a gate code, I can come in. That's gonna be an uncomfortable conversation, or multiple uncomfortable conversations. So for us, as these things come about, we'll, we'll do some work on that and make sure we draft some language. But just an understanding that if there's gonna be a discussion of it being gated, then within the approval process, there should be discussion that it will for nevermore not be public, and be own, maintained by the HOA, whether this is the single developer, as you guys are going through now on some of yours, or once the developer's finished, then it goes to them, but it can't be both. It, it can't be, um, publicly maintained, public right-of-way, privately gated by individual residents. Their argument is correct, it's a, it is a dead-end subdivision, there's nowhere to go once you get in, except out. I understand that, but if it's publicly owned and publicly maintained, it has to be publicly accessible. So as we get into that, you're likely gonna have a visitor or two, or three, or more at the planning commission to discuss all these, but that's where we are. Um, I sent an email to the HOA today, of their attorney, the developer, to let them know that once the final layer of asphalt's installed, a decision will be made that it's HOA or city. Again, we're indifferent to it, but the threshold would be, if it's ours, all of ours, public, then the gate and all access and connections to it would have to be removed. So, just something to think about as we get into these HOAs for a variety of discussions. Another thing that I'd like for you to consider, and again, this is another discussion for tonight, we'll draft this, but you may recall that um, several months ago, last year, this body enacted guidelines such that if there is a sidewalk that is required, um, within the subdivision regulations, however, that side, that sidewalk doesn't make sense, landscape, slope, um, that sort of thing, geography, um, other similar issues, then there's an opportunity for a developer, upon agreement with this board, to pay an amount equal to not less than seventy-five percent of the construction of those sidewalks, to go into an ADA sidewalk fund that the city maintains, and we use that money for future ADA sidewalk construction, maintenance, or that sort of thing. The first one of those was Fairview Station, I believe is the name of it, which is behind Westwood. The, what brought about that was, the sidewalks in that subdivision had been constructed, were complete, and were, um, in accordance with ADA guidelines, the difference was, it was a four-foot wide sidewalk, instead of a construction plan and approved five-foot wide sidewalk. So how we arrived at that regulation was, rather than reconstruct those sidewalks for one foot, um, which brought about a whole list of issues, that the opportunity could be going forward, in areas that it just didn't make sense, but the regs required it, a, a donation into that fund. Looking forward, as we get into HOAs, and we get into subdivision regulations and developments and other things, we're looking at ways that monies are best spent on the developer's side, on the resident's side, and of course, on the city's side. So what we'll likely bring to you is something similar, in language, similar in scope, but it, we, it would be related to recreational facilities. So let's say that we're talking about a subdivision that's, that may have an HOA, it's not gonna have a pool or some other thing, but may have a playground, recreation area, something like that. Um, obviously, someone's have to own that, maintain that, they may want to do that, and that's fine. But what we'd like to do is offer the same consideration in areas that may not make sense. Say you have a subdivision that has a small HOA, twenty or thirty homes, that may not be able to maintain a full-service playground, all the things that come about, offer a similar contribution to the city for the city's parks and recreation fund. So that rather than go and make those investments in small pocket parks that are only accessible and maintained by HOAs, and they may or may not want that, then you would be able to make a similar contribution to the city's park and recreation fund, and we would use those funds to, to develop playgrounds or other publicly accessible recreation facilities throughout the community. It, it wouldn't necessarily be an impact fee, it'd be just like the sidewalks. Um, impact fees kind of has a negative connotation to it, because there are, um, there are, um, i- impact fees are specific in use, specific in nature, specific in guideline for that. This would not be an impact fee, it would be a decision by the developer. And such that if,
But if he doesn't build playground, he's gonna have to contribute to it.
That, doesn't have to, that's his decision. If, if this board determines that there's gonna be a recreation facility or some other thing, or the developer decides, hey, look, in lieu of installing this, which will have to be privately maintained perpetually, that they may want to contribute to publicly maintained recreation facilities that the, that the city would do. So it's not a mandate, it's not an impact fee, it is an opportunity, in areas that may not work now or in the future, they could contribute recreationally, rather than, If it's not required by the subdivision regulations, there'd be no requirement for that, so. Right, it, there, if there's no regulation governing or mandating recreation facilities to be installed in the subdivision, then there's no, there's no mandate for that. If the developer had considered that, and thinks maybe this is not a wholly best use of those dollars, but I would like to contribute for some recreation for my residents, then we certainly would consider that as, as a, as a donation.
You can have them under the improved common areas?
Yeah.
And we can have a list of things, what would be included to make it improved, a lot of those is playground, the top lot that we see from S and C, the very same picture every time.
Yeah, pavilions. I don't know if I've seen one installed yet.
I haven't either, but I've seen lots of pictures.
So, just an, just an opportunity to look at that, and just take, maybe a broader community approach to those things, because, listen, as we've learned, playgrounds and playground equipment are not cheap. Um, the maintenance of those is not cheap. Um, unfortunately, some HOAs, and, and I, I believe HOAs certainly have their place, but HOAs, over time, bear that replacement cost, those other things that can become a burden on that, on that community. Now, streets may be one thing, subdivision, you know, sidewalks, those sorts of things, but they're, they're forever, other than asphalt, right? But playgrounds, those sorts of things that are gonna rot, decay, need to be removed, regulations change. If there's an opportunity to consider, where spaces that may not work, a contribution for that thing, that the city can then go back and invest in a larger scale, um, may be an opportunity to consider. Again, not something to be voted on tonight, it's just open for discussion. But we're trying to figure out, as we grow, how do we make the best reinvestment of the same dollar within the community? And if that offers up an opportunity, that's great, if it doesn't, that's okay, too. Um, but we're certainly trying to, to think through those. So, um, and then lastly, we'll, we'll take a quick break, I know we have to, to start, there are two things. As these subdivisions come online, and we start making the final inspections of the subdivisions, and I know that's been a weak spot for the city in years past, where we do these inspections, um, we bring them in, and maybe the inspection was more of a drive-through visit than a thorough inspection. We're looking to remedy that, where, when these subdivisions come before you for final acceptance, when they come to the city for final acceptance, be it streets, roadways, storm drains, that sort of thing. We're, we're really stepping up our inspection effort on those, to take some time to do that, and make sure everything works the way it's supposed to work, looks the way it's supposed to look, functions the way it's supposed to function. We like to invite you to be a part of those inspections. As we get into there, if you just kinda shoot me an email, if you'd like to be a part of that or not, when we go to these inspections, so you can kinda get an idea of what that is, we don't mind inviting you out to do that, so you can kinda see what we see when we're looking at that, you know, driving down the street is one thing, sticking your head in the manhole is something else. something else. Understand what that picture looks like, you know? Something as simple as, if I have a 36-inch drain and I have three inches of sediment, well, that sediment had to come from somewhere. So it may be that we need to have that developer go back, or whoever's responsible, remove all of that sediment, make sure it flows the way it flows, and make sure we can identify the source. That sediment could have been in there five years from construction that was missed, it could have been there from the last stormwater event where there's something's failed in letting that sediment in. So it would be important for us, for you, to be able to see those in real time on site, so when we're making those inspections, you can kind of get an idea of what we see, what it looks like, feels like. So if you would just shoot me an email yes or no on the inspections, we'll try to do some of those kind of, kind of field service type inspections, so you can see that as we go forward. We think that's very important for you, so when you're making the decision to accept something, or accept a bond, or increase or lower a bond, then you maybe had a little bit of hands-on to see what that looks like. We think that'd be super valuable for you to be able to do. We hope to accommodate you on that if you'll let us do that. And lastly, we've had some calls about stormwater. There's some stormwater that needs to be addressed, there are several places throughout the city that needs to be addressed. In large part, brief, brief discussion, we don't become MS4 or responsible for stormwater, storm sewer systems until we reach the 10,000 population threshold. There's a possibility we'll meet that with the 2020 census, we'll be close. With that, we want to make a concerted effort. If we hit that threshold and we need to do that, then everyone at the city, I know the mayor, commissioner Burks, everyone else on the city commission, is prepared to make the investments that we need to make in that. In the interim, we don't have the enforcement capability, simply because of our size, to do full-scale enforcement with stormwater. So we're kind of in this interim period where we expect it to be here soon, it's not here now. So as you go forward, if you get stormwater complaints, concerns, discolored stormwater, how does this function, how does this work, if you'll give that to us somehow, some way, we want to follow up and see what that is. We also can use that as a part of our inspection enforcement going forward, so we make sure that we're prepared as we, as prepared as we can be when we meet those thresholds. There are typically two, urbanized area, which we're in, or three, urbanized area which we're in, population of 10,000, which we'll likely hit or be close to with the 2020 census. I looked it up today, the census bureau shows us at 8,999 as of the 2018, so we'll be close to the 10,000. And then the third threshold for that generally is a population density of 1,000 persons or more per square mile. We're at about 9,000 population and 17 square miles, so we're not within the density calculation, but we will be within the population calculation. So as we get there, we may do a separate series of trainings on stormwater, so you can understand what that is, what that looks like, what it really means, and make sure that when we hit those thresholds, we're prepared for the enforcement part of it. So nothing to take action on tonight, just know that that's something we are focusing on pretty heavily, to be prepared for once we get, have those thresholds met. So thoughts, ideas, concerns, on anything at all?
Just thinking of a quick practical workaround for the school registration requirements and things like that. Would it be possible to grab an official document like a car insurance policy or something like that, it's got your street address written out on it that you could take to them? Does it actually need to be mailed through a letter in an envelope, or can it be something simple like that that you can take? Just trying to think of a practical workaround for you guys.
Just need the bill, don't you?
Yeah, electric bills, middle Tennessee electric.
You can get the bill online.
Yeah. I mean, you could print them out offline, they should have your address on there.
Get a lot of different things, an affidavit. You don't get denied school just because you can't afford electric. Can't afford utilities, you can't go here.
It's just a matter of fighting the cash cow that is the weak side.
Any other questions?
Yeah. They have a common area, but no idea what that is.
I just want to, I really, I just want to, you know, there's always so much that you can really wrap your mind around here, you know? First, I have a good feeling, I understand, it's like, I'm excited by this official document, it says this needs our standards.
Yeah, and I've got to make sure that 138 acres, stuff like, man, there's no possible way I can...
Well, that's a shame. I hate that feeling of, are we closer to getting a statute of limitations or something?
That'd be a good question tonight. They've been talking about it.
Scaring out, like, yeah, that was approved in Southern Maine, and you're going to...
You really can't go back to your restaurant.
Exactly, yeah.
Isn't April 9th, they're trying to submit right now, with the turkey flip right away. They're like, this is approved, if you can't do this, Project Falls.
Someone buy it and change it?
Definitely, you have to change it, it doesn't need to be...
The only one that can sue them is the state attorney general's office. In reality, that's the only way you can get anything.
The thing is, like, it doesn't need to come just suing, you know? Like, there's someone, there's a human being locally who is saying, hey, guys, when you go out, don't deliver to that, like...
This is the federal government, they're going to follow, it's, this is why government's horrible, because someone in Washington has said to them, here's what you're going to do. And this person's like, you know what, I like this job, I want to move up in this job, so I'm going to do what this guy said. Common sense has left the bill, along with else.
I just, I don't know, I'm not you, I just expect that, like, the good inside people, like, there's a human being around you somewhere, he's telling, there's some work that's like, hey, don't deliver to that.
But they have to, because that's their job. What should happen is them say, I tell you what, they're going to move those two, they'll put one in, until then, we'll go ahead and deliver to, until then, with a deadline, right? But that's not what, that's the problem with the federal government, it's a one-size-fits-all approach, here's what we do. Because they couldn't have a patchwork, you can't do one thing here and here, because then they get sued, say, well, you treat two different areas different, you have disparate treatment, and that's part of, that's a problem. That's why they do the, we do the same for everyone, because it's easier to manage. That's why I love to see these federal walls, that they make, you know, it's like, why do I have to do this here? Because we need it done there, therefore, everyone has to do it.
And we're all so siloed, us, like, our individual communities and subdivisions and things like that, we're not really networking all together.
That's from the other night.
You can't really kind of, to go and talk, like...
Oh, yeah.
No, you can't. It's just like a bunch of self-loathing ants all going, still, you know?
Well, you know, you go to these countries in Europe that are so small, they can get together, they have a conversation. Can't, it's just too, too...
In this country, you can be in this part of the country...
I do not, probably, it makes sense.
Every little section of this country is very much different.
That's why the electoral college is so important in our country, where it wouldn't be necessarily somewhere else, what we need here, it is, because California, which could almost control an election, is so different, not just culturally, but their geography, their finding, everything's so different, it doesn't apply to someone in New York. It's crazy bizarre stuff.
Good evening, we'll call to order May 12th, planning commission meeting at 7:08 PM. If you'll join me for the opening prayer and pledge, please. Lord, we're meeting today to cook matters of business, we've got our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, we'll go to the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Blade Anderson? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we'll go to citizens' comments. Thank you, sir. Approval of the minutes from the March 10th, 2020 regular meeting.
Motion to approve.
Burks, Qualls, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we will go to final plat, new business, item one, final plat for Pinnock Place, map 42, parcel 74, proposed lots 38, owner, Pinnock Place LLC. Any staff comments? No?
There are no comments on this, the couple of things we had, they did take care of.
Thank you, sir.
Let me open this for discussion, please.
Sure.
One thing that was brought up, I think, at the workshop is the placement of the mailbox. Again, I think this is one that just kind of got stuck in some common space. Doesn't meet the requirements that we have for a cluster mailbox. There's no parking space marked off, there's no design drawing, it has to be covered, and those types of things.
I have it sitting right here in front of me, yes, ma'am? We don't have it up there. It was, it should have been sent in email, if you had that.
It's at the very end, right before the cul-de-sac, at the top, right?
If you'd like to see it, I have it pulled up right now.
It's between lots 13 and 38, close to the pump station on common area, and there is a note that common areas are to be maintained by the homeowners association.
Kevin, do you have something?
Well, this was put in, you know, this is afterthought, like, a lot of them that we've having, and we're just doing the best we can, but we actually coordinated this with the postmaster. She put in a marking, and of course, a letter, I think, that we had sent over as well, that's just where she had required it, but, you know, it's like, it's like some of the ones that we're having without Otter Creek, it's the stuff that was approved by the board, and, you know, we're kind of doing the best that we can to kind of makeshift a place with the, you know, to appease the postmaster, but kind of stuck in the middle of it, I mean, you know, we're just doing the best we can, and this is, this is where, this is the only open common space that we had that would be suitable to be able to put it, so appreciate, you know, like I said, Mr. Burks' comments with that, I agree, it's, you know, it's not where the city would like it to be, but, you know, this is, this is where we can put it to appease the postmaster. So this is where she said put it.
This one is set up so that the homeowners association will be taking responsibility of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and like they said earlier, you're going to have a trash can full of all the junk mail every day, or every three or four days.
I agree, it's, you know, and luckily for this right here, it's only 38 lots, you know, it's not like it's a, you know, we have over, we have over that, or around about this short shot of that, just in the first phase of Otter Creek, and, you know, at least this has open green space, we, you know, we're having a, and of course, this is open for another discussion another day, but Otter Creek, you know, we're running to, you know, we have 1.3 acre tracts, and some of the, some of the estate lots that's over in, you know, across the street, and smallest thing we have over here is half acre lots, and, you know, we've just got to slither a piece of property, even try to squeeze these things in, and it's kind of an afterthought, and so it really puts us right in the middle of a, of a, of a little bit of a situation, again, with these CBU boxes. Once we get past some of these other, you know, even into another phase, at least in Otter Creek, we have other phases that we can try to work with this situation. You know, with Pinnock Place, this is, you know, a small 38-lot development, and it's, you know, we've done the best we could with it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's where the question lies to me, is at what point is it our duty to go back? Legally, can we go back and revisit? Last month, we did a contingent on satisfying, I think we had two of them, satisfying the cluster mailbox with the postmaster, and I think they did something similar to what we've done on this one, on Wynwood, and there was one other one from, or two months ago.
Whispering Winds and Wynwood both were brought up at the last meeting. Whispering Winds put in a spot on their plat that they dedicated to the HOA, similar, and had HOA to maintain that. Wynwood actually already had a spot for some of the residents there, and they just enlarged that area to take care of all of those that would be required.
Thank you, sir.
I guess my question is this, I mean, I understand that that's where the postmaster wanted it, and you're limited without losing a lot, but our regulation requires that when it is put in, that it has to have certain things, and will that be able to occur at that spot without us creating a variance at this point on that?
Commissioner Burks, I think the, our regulation...
Mr. Burks, I think the, our regulation was going forward for everything that came to this body after the adoption of that regulation. Anything that took place prior to the adoption of that regulation is silent as it relates to the city and this board, and also, I don't believe this, I know the city, on its own volition, cannot go back, this board, or the city council, or board of commissioners, cannot go back and amend any plat, that plat amendment would have to be done by the property owner. So, in this case, going backwards, I don't think the city has any opportunity to enforce a, I don't think we can retroactively enforce the creation of what we identified in the regulation for the postal boxes.
And that was one of my questions, is can we, does it have to? And is this gonna cause a problem being there in the cul-de-sac, where that means there will be parking? And that's gonna cut down that turnaround radius and those things? But as long as we're following what we're supposed to do, it is what it is.
Unfortunately.
Heard on everyone. Any additional discussion? Ms. Cavender?
One other thing, I mentioned cul-de-sac, this cul-de-sac is a little larger than the typical cul-de-sac, so I just, although that really won't appease everybody, I just, if it makes it any better, it at least is a little bit larger than a typical cul-de-sac.
Any additional discussion? Anyone like to make a motion?
Second.
Anderson, motion to approve. Jenkins, second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Guys, item two, new business, request for annexation, map 21, parcel 35.02, 2.66 acres, owner, Thomas Varden. Any staff comments on this?
There are no staff comments, it is in urban growth boundary, so we saw no issues with the annexation.
I suppose, I know the same thing Mr. Burks mentioned to me earlier, when you put in that address, it pulls up the back part of that parcel, so just, and that might just be not caught up yet on the tax maps. But when you put in that 7933, or whatever it was.
Or the address itself.
Yeah, it pulls up.
The address pulls up the back portion, since then, the map and parcel have been updated. If you can see on that map, the parcel is shown as 35.02, and that's what we will go by for the legal recording.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Is any of this surrounding property already in the city? Or is it just because it's touching Horn Tavern?
The property directly across the street from it is, so as far as adjacent goes, the property between Horn Tavern and Highway 96 is within the city limits.
I went to the county GIS map, and I couldn't pull that up, so, thank you.
Anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Burks, Blade, first and second, any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item three, new business, recommendation to BOC, revision of City of Fairview zoning ordinance, Article 6 residential district regulations. Mr. Sullivan?
I realized there was something that I was forgetting, I couldn't put my hand on what it was, and apparently it was this document to read. Hold on one second, I will. Apologize for that. You all received by email the other day, it's ordinance 2020-12, and it is the discussion on construction of language and definitions, terms defined. Currently, we have accessory structure defined as subordinate structure detached from but located on the same lot as a principal building. The use of accessory structure must be identical and accessory to the use of the principal building. Accessory structures include garages, carports, decks, and fences. Changing that over fits your condition to the board to that last line. Accessory structures include garages, carports, temporary or permanent private swimming pools with depths greater than 24 inches, and detached non-covered decks. That's doing two things, one, it's taking fences out of the accessory structure. Leaving that in dictates location and exactly how they are to be built, identical to the accessory, or to the permanent structure, so there's really no way to do that with a fence, but also it adds non-covered decks and swimming pools greater than 24 inches, because currently they are not covered as what would be accessory or not, and that way, we can have the location for a swimming pool in that rear yard. We did limit it at the 24 inch mark, just so that if somebody has a small kiddie pool, and they want to pull it out into their driveway one day, we're not gonna sit there and police that, but if somebody does have a pool that is temporary or permanent, that has a depth of over 24 inches, that that can't be placed in the front yard, it must be in the rear yard, five foot off property lines.
Sir?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Burks, Jenkins, first and second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we'll go to bonds and letters of credit, item one, Willowcrest Performance Bond, the amount of $394,000, will expire May 15th, 2020.
I did change that on the slide in front of you, that is set to renew, as the Willowcrest bonds are for all of those, they are the automatic renewing bonds, and we do have that letter showing that it is to be continuous.
Sir? You recommend that we still take an action to call if it's automatic renewal, or? No action needed?
I don't know if any action needed, because the, no numbers are changing, and it's just, just that continuation, but if attorney has anything different to say on that, we will go with his vote. All right, he says we're good.
Thank you, guys. Item two, Sweetbrier Springs, Phase 2, and the amount of $742,000, will expire May 17th, 2020. Developer, Marlin Cunningham, is asking for a reduction to this bond, recommended bond, $584,500.
Kevin and I went to the site today, we did a pretty good walkthrough a couple of times, looking all parts of the infrastructure, and then the numbers that he came back with for that new recommended amount was the $584,500.
Sullivan, what kind of bond is this one? Is this the construction or reclamation, or?
It's a performance letter of credit, I do believe.
Performance bond?
Should be, yes, sir.
I'd make a motion that we reduce the performance bond for Sweetbrier Spring, Phase 2, to the recommended amount of $584,500.
Second.
Burks, Jenkins, any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item three, Westway Apartments, site improvement, performance bond, and the amount of $80,000, will expire June 11th, 2019.
They have not requested a reduction, and we will keep an eye on this and make sure they have that before that date. With that, we are trying to get bonds a little bit more ahead, I know this one will expire right after the June 9th meeting, but instead of waiting two days, we are trying to catch those month and a half to two months ahead, to keep there from being that last minute pressure.
According to this, it expired a year ago.
Well, about that, we'll make a dash through that, 2019 to go to 2020. It is current.
I'll make a motion that we call the bond if it's not renewed by June 11th of 2020, for the site improvement, the site improvement performance bond for Westway Apartments.
Second.
Burks, Callie, any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, we go for reports for discussion and information, sitting planning staff, Mr. Sullivan.
I do want to thank everybody for being here for training and discussion before the meeting. Again, if there's something that you know of, training wise, would love to hear that and see what we can do. We do want to have the traffic study, training, the step system training, and anything else, again, that you can think of, I would love to entertain that. Two things we've been talking about for a while, that we keep saying, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. The zoning map, we are just a few steps away from having that completely renewed. It is ready to be online, as far as logistic wise, everything is up. There are several properties that we're gonna have to meet with, and they'll come before you for rezonings at that point. But we've got several that just have to be cleaned up, and once that's done, that map will come to this board, and then to the Board of Commissioners for a final approval as well. But we are definitely seeing the light at the end of the tunnel on this one. Kevin has put hours and hours into this, and if he was here, I would thank him, but since he's not, we'll talk bad about him, but no, he's done great with that, and is already helping us, and I know it will be really big for us, we'll get that on website, and that way, anytime, if you have questions, or if anybody else has questions on the zoning, as well as the land use, because he has the land use from the 2040 plan on there as well, so it'll be a quick, easy jump on the maps, and look and see what something's owned, what its potential is, and some of the areas around that as well. So, that's great. Number two is the street standards, we have that coming forward pretty soon. It will come kind of as a skeleton, and then go deeper from there, but I think we will bring that to this board, similar to zoning ordinance, where it will come here, full recommendation to the BOC for final adoption. So, we've got both of those coming along, and they are, they're time consuming, and again, Kevin has done some great things with that, so when you see him, or if you want to shoot him a text, just tell him thank you for everything he's doing for us, he's definitely helping and getting a lot of things cleared up. Other than that, that's all I've got.
Sir, any questions for Mr. Sullivan? All right, city manager, Mr. Collins?
Nothing for you tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. City engineer, Mr. Potter? I'm sorry, city attorney. You can be engineer tonight, too, if you want. All right, communication from the Planning Commission members. Commissioner Burks?
Mr. Cavender, thank you for coming tonight, I know you're trying to fix an impossible situation that the post office has put in your lap through no fault of your own. I'm not trying to be difficult, but, and I know you put out a good product, and you'll do the best you can to make it as usable as possible, and we appreciate that, thank you.
Lewis? Mr. Power?
This will be my last night with Fairview Planning Commission. The family I've worked for part-time for seven years now has decided to up my salary and put me on a full-time position. I'd also been looking for a house here in Fairview, and they've offered me a house and everything, so I guess Corona has done something for me, it's stepped me out of the country. I thoroughly enjoyed my time on this, this thing. I think this planning commission, not because of me, but because of the other people on it, the staff is a lot better than it was whenever I got here. And prior to not me being here, with all these people being here, I think it's a lot more thoughtful, it's a lot more fair, and I think Fairview's got a lot better group here, taking care of them than they did maybe five, six years ago.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jenkins?
Micah, where are we right now on creating a statute of limitations to ordinances for whenever a plat is approved versus whenever actual construction takes place, before they have to come back and get approval again?
I think this is when I say, we're working on it, or we're looking into it.
Okay.
It's written on a sticky note on my desk, that's one of the next ones to be written and come through. I say it often, y'all make fun of me, it's okay. Something like that, getting the wording down correctly, we do look at a lot of the areas around, see what other cities are doing, see what we're doing and why, and what they're doing and why.
Okay.
So, it takes some background, it's more than just saying, hey, this is what we're gonna do, typing it up and sending it out. We are trying to figure that out, but like I said, it is next on my list on the sticky note of things to do.
Cool, thanks, man. Just want to make sure it wasn't a ball that was getting dropped, that's all.
I hope not.
That's all.
Mr. Callie?
Well, I want to thank Mr. Jenkins for asking that question, otherwise I would have asked it, because since Micah, you know, has developments out there since he was in kindergarten, or whatever it was, you know. And the other thing I want to say is, thank you to Mr. Powers for his service to the board, and good luck on your future endeavors.
Mayor, Mr. Qualls?
All right, I want to thank Mr. Powers, too, it's been a pleasure working with you, and good luck, and, Micah, thank you for all you do, I think you do a great job, so.
Mayor Blade?
Appreciate Mr. Cavender being here, I know he's in a difficult spot. Emails that I have received from his residence in where he is building have been very complimentary of him and of his attitude, and I appreciate that. Jim, it's been an honor to serve with you, wish you the best, go miss you. That's all I've got, sir, thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
I'm sitting back here because of what's going on nationwide, but anyway, thank Mr. Powers, I also want to thank the staff, and welcome back our city manager, I enjoy him immensely in what he helped us with. I have a quick report on the Dixon Water and Sewer, not much to tell you, they did hold a meeting last night, they asked for no employees other than their board, and said I could come, but they preferred that I did not, so I did not go. They have two things that affect us directly, and that is the Fairview sewer treatment plant that they've been, spent a lot of money on and upgrading, and they think they're 30 days from being complete with that. And then the second thing is a proposed new sewer treatment plant on the west side of 840. They have their documents in place, they have submitted for a permit, and then got it sent back, because nobody knew how to write the request. Now, the state has closed the office because of the coronavirus, so there's no place now to resubmit or communicate with, and so they're sitting there basically just on hold. And according to them, they're anxious, are as anxious as we are, to get this thing going forward, so proof will be in the pudding, but they were very forward with trying to explain to me what they have going on in our behalf.
Thank you, sir. Well, echo, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight, Mr. Power, thank you so much for all your time and effort you put here, it's been a pleasure serving with you, and then echo everybody saying thank you to the staff. Every now and then, I'll go sign a plat and end up in an hour or two of a conversation with those guys, they're digging into everything, no stone unturned, and they're passionate about it, and I think we're in good hands, and they're working hard to try and get everything straight and work forward, so that's all I have tonight, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So, moved.